Let's sign those.
Yeah, eh, she came to me. I hear her, ah, they're not that's you. Gisido, da, it's an old thing. Kodo, she did, he can learn in here, try and nail net to let. Conde, it's a, it's a reason, Lenny, Ben, ah, deal, me, she came to us, nah, ah, need eh, yeah. Me, it's a reason, hold on, though, it's, ah, at, ah, me, oh, it's like, no, it's, Lani. Joe, eh, Kodo, nacha, so, nah, deal, Zandolet. And, eh, who's on, don't, she, man, ah, has done, yeah, the hell. Ah, do, it's a list, son, true, it's, son. Chal, yeah, eh, yo, it's, call, it's, eh, one. Now, that's great, now, that's true. Had it, me, it's, ah, nah, great, eh, who's on. Kodo, eh, deep, Ben, eh, be, eh, on, then, I, he, got, eh, ah, which, eh, Kodo, it's, it's a deal, Zin. Ha, she, nah, go, eh, Kodo, can, eh, Lenny, me, try, huh, nail, eh. Ah, do, it's a reason, Lenny. Nacha, that, eh, you know, insane, me, he, eh, Dan, Lenny, nacha, that, eh, you know, insane. Ah, do, Dean, me, it, the, never, for how, so, but, ah, oh, do, that, it's, wrong, go. Con, yeah, at, eh, on, he, nah, has, ah, do, let, yeah, at, eh, on, he, nah, oh, ah, do, let. Ah, do, ah, it's, huh, nacha, has, true, me, it's, ah, me. Me, it's a lot, so, that, Dan, Lenny, to, K, to, K, Dan, Lenny, ah, it's, huh. Bet, ha, yeah, the, how, eh, on, nacha, insane, do, let. Ah, do, huh, me, in, time, case, me, in, nacha, that, um, Lenny. Best, it, me, it's, me, Ben, nah, need, eh, do, let, nah, school, net, me, it, eh. Ah, me, it's, huh, he, the, huh, no, do, let, me, get, ah, don't, me, it's, eh, eh, eh. Ah, don't, me, not, ah, me, Dan, Lenny, con, President and Vice President. Ah, do, it's a, eh, Dan, Lenny, gee. Ah, don't, me, be, she, ah, so, ah, it's, huh, no, Dan, Lenny, ah, it's, huh. Nacha, we, Kodo, it, lead, oh, let, bah, nah, holy, yeah, do, let, ah, do, huh, when, has, ah, go. Me, it's, Kodo, nah, it's, come, go, and he, come, that, it, it, me, when, eh, she, she, nah, it's, like, oh, ah, it's, huh. Nacha, bah, ah, holy, yeah, do, let. Me, in, ah, and, me, it's, ah, Lenny, con, yeah, at, eh, eh, con, me, it, the, huh, is, la, insane. Ah, do, eh, yo, eh, no, eh, Kodo, Keshmish, nah, that, eh, it, let, do, nah, school, net, me, it, eh, nah, that, oh, ha. But, ah, eh, on, so, the, Zin, Lenny, ah, and, she, and, eh, Ben, huh, nah, nah, see, do, let. Ah, did, eh, Ben, he, it, nah, who, John, do, let, who's, huh, nah, sleep, who's, huh, nah, sleep, who's, huh, nah, sleep. He, yeah, she, came, oh, shit, nah, Kodo, she, eh, in, not, ah, Lenny. Eh, came, oh, that's, it, Danny, Bah, nah, hold, she, John, eh.
At this time, I'd like to introduce our Honorable Vice President, Shiyaj Myron Lizer, if you have the floor.
Oh, yeah. Thank you, Dr. Fowler, I appreciate it. Yeah, it's been a Vice President, Lizer, here, it is December ninth, and welcome to our Town Hall, where we give out vital information, recent data, and updates from this COVID-19 pandemic, so, thank you for joining us. Appreciate the prayer this morning, thank you, Shma. President Nez is waiting in the wings, along with our health professionals, so, real quick. I'm down, attending the Retirement Planning Committee meetings, here, looking at our retirements, our benefits, and like, getting reports and updates, and being able to just be comprised of all of our nation's holdings, here, for our retirees, as real quick, inside, there is over thirteen thousand that are receiving benefits from the, our PAC, so, really important. And as of this morning, the retirement that is already obligated for our people is stated at one point two billion dollars, so, you know, that, that's good, that our people are trying to bring these enhancements, and, you know, enlighten the nation and our leadership, here, again, being with the committee, here, to just look over this, and see if there's any adjustments or any analysis that needs to be advocated for, and then, you know, recommendations made, so, but, here we are, again, it is December ninth, so, thank you for joining us. Real quick, as I always do, give updates on what this pandemic looks like around us in our region. So, recent news in the United States, scientists monitor variants and the coronavirus's evolution through genetic tests that are separate from the kinds of tests used to determine whether someone has COVID-19. This genetic sequencing allows scientists to monitor how the virus changes over time. You know, you and I well know that, you know, these viruses do mutate, and so, we're seeing it happen, and have seen it happen over the last nineteen months. The coronavirus is continually evolving, but most mutations are inconsequential. At this point, scientists are trying to figure out whether the Omicron spreads more easily, or causes more severe disease than the Delta variant, and now dominates in the US. They are also studying how well vaccines work against it, so, all this is ongoing, real-time news and information, so, we appreciate these updates. Thank you, Adam, for, for these updates. I'm in Arizona, a little bit more closer to home, here. Arizona's first known case of the Omicron variant has been confirmed in Yabai County. The state and local health officials said yesterday, Wednesday. The Arizona Department of Health Services and Yabai County Community Health urge people to get vaccinated. Get a booster shot, if eligible, stay home, if sick, wear a mask, and maintain physical distancing. Nothing's gonna change from that, you know, and it's, it's just good to stay on top of the latest news as they develop. Apache County, nineteen months into this pandemic, fifteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight cases total, with thirty-four new cases to report, as of this morning. Navajo County, twenty-five thousand, four hundred and four, with a hundred and twenty-seven new cases to report. Lastly, of our tri-county area, Coconino County, twenty-six thousand and ninety-two, with seventy-two new cases to report there, so. Those are just the latest updates for Arizona, our portion of northern, northeastern Arizona. Colorado, last week, Colorado detected its first cases of the Omicron variant in patients from Arapahoe and Boulder Counties. The Delta variant continues to account for all other cases in the state, as it has since August. Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment Waste Water Surveillance System has picked up the Omicron variant in Boulder County. As officials have announced, that points to low community transmissions of the variant through CD-PAT. Doesn't yet know how many cases there might be in the community, again, this was found in the sewage system, so. Latest technologies are able to test when spread, rapid spread could be detected in our sewage system, so, good job there for those counties. Again, in Arapahoe and Boulder County in the state of Colorado. Eight hundred and forty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine are the total positive cases nineteen months into this pandemic in, for Colorado, with one thousand, six hundred and fifty new cases to report there in Colorado. New Mexico, our eastern neighbors, here. New Mexico, on Wednesday, had its highest number of Corona-related hospitalizations since January second, and the state hasn't yet seen an expected bump in cases from the Thanksgiving holiday, health officials are reporting. The state recorded six hundred and eighty-seven COVID-19 hospitalizations Wednesday, as of yesterday. Modeling predicts the number will stay steady or increase slightly in the coming weeks, acting Health Secretary Dr. David Scraps, Grass, Grass, Grace, said during an online briefing. Again, that was yesterday. So, New Mexico, total three hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and thirteen, with one thousand, four hundred and forty-four new cases to report. San Juan County, our northwest neighbors there, and, you know, touches on the Navajo Nation as well, twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight, with ninety-four new cases to report. McKinley County, seventeen thousand and seventy-six, with forty-two new cases to report there, so, let's continue to be vigilant and be careful out there. Utah. A second case of the new COVID-19 Omicron variant has been detected in Utah. It's a Utah County man between twenty-five and forty-four years old, who was infected with the new variant, that was initially identified late last month in South Africa, according to the Utah Department of Health. Well, officials said Utahns, who are, who are unvaccinated, were at fifteen point nine times greater risk of dying from COVID-19 than vaccinated Utahns over the last twenty-eight days. There were also, they are also nine point three times greater risk of being hospitalized, and three point five times greater risk for testing positive. Six hundred and seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four are the new, the numbers for total positive cases nineteen months into this, with one thousand, four hundred and twenty-three new cases to report in Utah, this is overall close, a little bit closer to home, southeastern Utah, San Juan County, two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five, and our own Utah, Navajo Health System, reporting total cases of one thousand, three hundred and sixty-one. So, in closing, I'd like to just let you know that as you travel potentially, or you gather indoors and spend time with family during this holiday season, and you're with friends over the holidays, a booster shot is the most effective way to keep you safe. It's an added layer of protection and will greatly reduce the chances of you spreading COVID-19 to you or your loved ones. COVID-19 vaccines continue to work very well at preventing severe illness, hospitalization, and even death. A booster shot is an extra dose that helps you keep up your protection, so, as they say, you know, the things we could do to advocate as leaders for all of our people across the net, huh, is that we wish you to be safe, healthy, and wise, and so, we continue to advocate for you at the highest levels, even exaggerating our message to reach those in the very remote areas of the Navajo Nation and the world, right, we, we, we say our Navajo people are everywhere, and so. We pray for all of you to be safe, as well as the whole globe, and we're all in this together, we'll work like it depends on us. But we're gonna pray like it depends on our Creator, Shijadi, God, as it does, so, we thank you again for this time, and now, ladies and gentlemen, we have President Jonathan Nez waiting in the wings. We appreciate his stellar and exemplary leadership during this fight against COVID-19, so. Sir, are you ready to take it away? And this is Vice President signing off at the RPA meetings, and we appreciate you, so, thank you for your time, your kind attention. Ladies and gentlemen, President Jonathan Nez.
Hey, good morning, Vice President, thank you for that, and good morning, I'm here with the First Lady of the Navajo Nation, Fefilia Nez, and we wanna wish you all a happy Thursday. Throwback Thursday, as they say sometimes. Checking out your your old photos, maybe today, as we transition to Friday tomorrow. As you all know, on Tuesday, we didn't have the Town Hall, we wanted to get a little bit more information on this variant, this new variant called Omicron. And today, we're gonna have Dr. Amanda Burridge give you an update on what's happening here on the Navajo Nation, and also Dr. Jill Jim from the Navajo Department of Health, and Del Yasi from the Epidemiology Department. So, here, I, it's an old thing, I do, Dan, me, it's, ah, Jonathan Nez, eh. Ah, need, oh, Kodo, but, I, nah, she, me, Fefilia Nez, eh, she, do. Yeah, eh, Dan, me, it, eh, need, oh, let, it, eh, Koa, nah, Dean, John, Dan, eh, sure, that's, eh, clean. Ah, Koo, Nlee. Ah, Twon, Nande, ah, Nlee, na, Kri, na, Kri, Lijini. Ah, Kedah, eh, it. Ah, deh, di, dek, Kusun, Tsukagi, nah, has, eh, it's, ah, the, just, eh, it, eh. Ah, Bahon, eh, yeah, di, Kada, Kana, that's, nah, Dean, the, Zit. Ah, me, it, eh, I, eh, so, di, dek, Kusun, Tsukagi, but, ah, do. Ah, variant, eh, Nene, gee, eh, so, di, K, Delta variant, eh, need, eh, Koo. Ah, it's, ah, do, eh, I, eh, so, dek, Kusun, Tsukagi, nah, has, eh, it's, ah, the. Ah, eh, Omicron, ah, nah, yeah, go. Ah, oh, eh, Koo, eh, Yedigo. Ah, Nah, Ni, ha, no, Bah, nah, Nade, Huzdo, Ha, Ho, Zo, J. Me, eh, ah, to, Koa, eh, Omicron, Bah, Nah, Dan, Deh. Ah, had, eh, no, Lne, da, di, no, Koda, eh, yeah, sa, me, it, eh, Kunde, Kunde, eh. So, eh, bin, that, eh, yeah, ah, di. Ha, she, da, 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 Ndeh, eh, do, Keshmish, Ya, J, eh, Lne. Oh, ta, nah, and, me, it, do, huh, Nade, me, it, eh, Kunde, eh, yeah, Kunde, eh, eh, oh. Kui, she, the, Mo, Zli, ah, Koo, eh, he, eh, nah, eh, she, eh, no, Lini. Da, eh, da, it's, an old, ah, do, ah, di, eh, Zel, eh, Neki, Bokan, Dah, J. Eh, huh, Nade, oh, nah, and, me, it. Kodo, be, Ken, So, Zi, do, ah, dah, eh. Njone, Koshi, Thanksgiving, that, so, Lni. Eh, and, ah, do, yeah, go, yeah, go, de, desk, he, da, di, Nah, Ni, eh. Allah, eh, J, that's, Allah, Nez, eh, di, do, ah, dis, di, Bila, Nelt, Allah, eh, J. Con, he, Keni, nah, but, ah, do, nah, con, eh, yeah, con, ah, Netsa. So, eh, he, eh, Dan, me, it, eh, need, oh, let, eh, she, eh, no, Lini, ah, con, eh. Da, eh, no, Lne, ah, Shwane, eh, di, Keshmish, eh, Nah, Hol, J. Oh, eh, she, eh, Keni, nah, in, Ha, Lch, Nda, ah, Keshmish, eh, she, eh, she, eh, 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 Bah, eh, Bich, eh, Ndeh, Stah, Lo. She, eh, yeah, eh, she, da, eh, no. Ah, Koo, La, in, Ha, Lch, N. Ah, eh, she, ah, it's, Koda, eh, da, Old, Trat, eh, da, Nah, Nished, eh, da. So, ah, eh, Kodo, Bah, eh, Kui, Lne, eh, ah, Shwane, eh. Ah, oh, ta, nah, that, eh, Lenny, eh, bin, eh, oh, ta, eh, di, Zel, eh, be, Ken, si, Zing, eh, eh, do, do, yeah, go, de, nah, do, do, eh, Kich, eh, eh, ah, Shwane, eh. Eh, Kich, eh, da, oh, Lne. Eh, Keni, Nne, do, eh, Nida, Kri, eh. Ah, do, eh, Yedigo, ah, ah, that, so, da, yeah, eh, he, da.
Strengthening those ties and the family bonds as parents who have children. And all we want for them is to be safe, to feel loved and just to encourage and support them in what it is that we want them to do to have good outcomes in their lives and to be successful contributing people in society and building up our nation into future. So that's my prayer for all of you. And again, happy holidays.
Thank you, First Lady of Philly and there's in Eli may have these slides. I wanted to go over this here. As you can see on the on the slide, well, let's go with that one. First, the Navajo Nation residents. I know some people have said, why do you keep talking about this? Well, we want to let you know what's happening here on Navajo. If we don't tell you, then someone's going to say you're not telling us. So, you know, be patient. And we just want to make sure that the information is shared with each and every one of you because the information is powered data that that we share with you. You can share with your family members. So forty thousand two hundred and fifty four total confirmed cases as of this week. And of those thirty seven thousand nine hundred and eighty two have recovered. Of course, those some of the the folks that are still in the hospital, you know, and we haven't really focused on getting that information because a lot of our attention is on the vaccination data. And plus, you know, we've seen a lot of much of our emergency rooms being full, you know, either flus, lot of flu or COVID. You know, you can't tell between the two. So people are going when they get sick, they go to the hospital. And so because they're the hospitals are seeing a lot more visits, that means a lot of the healthcare professionals are helping out those that are sick. And when it comes to data and paperwork, that kind of sometimes slows down. But let's be patient with our people that are working with the healthcare facilities and just supportive pray for as well. Confirmed deaths, one thousand five hundred and seventy five, one thousand five hundred and fifty seven. That's just here on Navajo Nation residents. You know, not counting Navajo people that live all around the world. This is just our our Navajo Nation. Yesterday, seventy new cases, thirteen were delayed and probably someone will say, why are you getting all the information? As well, you know, some of these cases are slowly coming in from the states. States have to verify it. And then it has to come back to the nation. And sometimes though, there's a delay there. New deaths, one delayed five. And, you know, we're doing our very best. They're doing their very best to get the accurate information out to the public. This is just not Navajo. It's every state has a delay as well. So don't don't just think it's just Navajo Nations. I've got in the next slide, and this is what I was talking about in Navajo earlier. I want to say thank you to the Navajo people. You know, we we really went out strong before Thanksgiving to get the message out, you know. We said, okay, try to do your very best not to have visitors over. But of course, people will have visitors over. If you have, if you're gonna have visitors over, please, this is and I think this is the reason why we were successful in keeping the numbers down during Thanksgiving is we're going to take off our mask when we're eating. So if we're going to eat with people, family members, wear your mask all the time. But when you eat, sit six to eight feet away from people to eat. You can still talk, you can still eat. But if we all do that, it'll slow down the spread and it won't be as severe as look at right in the middle of that chart. That's last year's Thanksgiving, Christmas and New Year's holidays and it just skyrocketed. Plus, the vaccine is something new this year. And keeping the the numbers low and and I want to say thank you for following the protocols. And as you can see there, we we had a surge. And because of you following the protocols, we've managed to keep it low. I think last week a hundred and forty plus was one day case count. I think that was probably the one of the highest that we've had for some time. Including one sixty four. But what we need to do is, you know, continue to follow these protocols and and just commit to, you know, staying safe. Tell your family members. If they're sick, stay home. Don't come to the Christmas dinner, you know. Even coughing, wear your mask, wear your mask all the time, no matter what. You know, everybody wears masks on Navajo Nation. So nobody should feel that ashamed. You know, you should be proud wearing a mask because you're 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 not just thinking of yourself, you're thinking of others. And that's what this is. That's how we've gotten through this pandemic. Thus far, and good job to the Navajo people. Stay strong as we go into Christmas and holiday of New Year's holiday. And we can get, keep these numbers down in our communities. Eli, if you go to the next slide, this kind of shows you a breakdown of vaccinations. Vaccination age groups, you know, five to eleven, you know, five to eleven year old partially vaccinated twenty three percent. Fully vaccinated six percent because they're finally getting their second dose. I think Alex is up for his second dose. To Saturday. So, you know, the young people, the five and over are starting to get their second vaccination. That's why you see the fully vaccinated as single digits percent. But once they get their second shot, they're fully vaccinated. Look at the twelve to nineteen year olds, fully vaccinated sixty seven percent. That's in the green. I'm looking at the green. Twenty to twenty four years, those are in the twenty to twenty four years, you need to, you know, do better fifty four percent. But look at those of you that have only one shot is sixty percent. So six percent of you haven't got your second shot yet. Let's let's get your second shot. I know we say we're too busy or we don't want to get a shot. Maybe we're scared. But like I said, let's think about our elders. Let's think about our people around us. All right. Twenty five to forty four years, we need to up that percentage sixty percent fully vaccinated. And so we need to encourage our our people to to get their their shots and including their boost boosters. Now, look at that. Look at the forty five to sixty four year old years old. Eighty percent. Good job to that age category. But look at this one, guys. Sixty five years and older are elders are taking this pandemic seriously, I think, based on what what I see. Eighty seven percent of our elders are fully vaccinated. Wow, you know? That is an awesome statistic and we want to say thank you to everybody that are fully vaccinated. And these, as you can see, Navajo as residents and service delivery areas. So that includes Gallup Off the Nation and also Uton Navajo Health Systems. But I think in the in the it might say, if you read the details on that, it might say that Uton Navajo Health System may not be a part of this, but they are, they are. Uton Navajo Health System is on there, including Winslow and all the service unit, Arrow six thirty eight. So good job to everybody. Continue to move forward on that and get your booster shots. So go ahead and take that down, Eli. We just want to say good job to everybody. Once again, during Thanksgiving, I I'm hoping we're all praying that the numbers don't go up. I think we've seen most of the Thanksgiving weekend numbers. But let's not let down. Let's stay strong, everybody. God bless you. And have a wonderful week. We'll get we'll see you guys back on Tuesday, the original time slot ten AM. So let everybody know, I'm going to turn the time over to Dr. Amanda Burge to give us an update to everyone throughout the nomination. God bless you. Thank you so much. Dr. Burge.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President and Mr. Vice President. So thank you for sharing the data on Navajo Nation. And as he noted, you know, we still have high case numbers. Thankfully, we haven't seen a huge surge after Thanksgiving, but we are watching closely and are still seeing some very severe illness, particularly in our unvaccinated population. I first want to touch on the Omicron variant. As you all are aware, we are watching this closely. There's a lot of information that we don't know yet about Omicron. We don't, we do think it is as contagious as Delta, if not more so. There are a number of new mutations on the Omicron variant that are very concerning for being able to spread quickly. And so we are watching that closely. As the Vice President mentioned, the first case of Omicron was sequenced here in Arizona in Yavapai County. We're not aware of any other information on that case in terms of whether it was somebody who traveled or whether it was community spread. But we do know that there we are now the twenty second state that has Omicron and there has been community spread in other states. So you know, not surprising that it is in Arizona. And we are continuing to sequence samples here on Navajo Nation to look and see if Omicron is here. We have not detected any here yet. And the thing about Omicron that we don't know yet is the severity of illness. So whether it will cause more severe illness, same as Delta, or, you know, hopefully less severe. And so there's a lot of information about this variant that we are watching closely to see. Think, you know, most importantly, what can we do? I think the most important thing for everyone, for individuals, for family members, for community members is to get vaccinated. So both the vaccine and the booster are extremely important. Boosters help increase the antibody level. So we know that over time the antibody level decreases. And so your body does not have as much protection. And so if you are six months out from your Pfizer or Moderna vaccine and you are eighteen years or older, you should get that booster dose. And for if you had Johnson, you should get the booster dose as soon as possible. And the FDA did just announce this morning and they are going to approve boosters for sixteen and seventeen year olds with that same time criteria. That has not been approved by the CDC yet, but once that is approved, check with your local healthcare facility. If you have a sixteen or seventeen year old to get them the booster dose, if it's been six months from their second dose as well. Important to note, vaccination is still extremely safe and very effective at preventing severe illness and death. Yesterday, the Arizona Department of Health released a new report on cases among vaccinated and unvaccinated individuals in the month of October. And their data in Arizona here in our state and showed that the unvaccinated individuals have a fifteen times increased risk of dying from COVID. And that is a a large number. That is not a risk that I would recommend anyone take. Similarly, unvaccinated individuals have a four time greater risk of testing positive. So even if you are vaccinated, as you may know, you may test positive, but thankfully, the vaccines are protecting you from having severe illness or death. For the most part. So again, just reiterate, make sure you've had your baseline vaccine series and the two doses of Pfizer or Moderna or the one Johnson Johnson. And if the time period has passed for you to get your booster dose, please get your booster dose as soon as possible. And then I also want to emphasize testing. So as Mr. President mentioned, so if you have any symptoms at all, if you have a little bit of a cough, a little bit of runny nose, I encourage you to test early. One thing that has changed recently in the pandemic is that we do have medications available that can help further decrease your risk of severe illness or death. And these are called monoclonal antibodies. These should be available at your local health facility. So if you test early and are within ten days of your symptom onset, you are eighteen years and older. You are eligible for this medication. So if you are aware of somebody who tested positive, ask them to check with their healthcare facility to see if this is an option to help further decrease their risk of having a severe illness. So then, just to reiterate, vaccines, 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 boosters, test early, ask about this option for a treatment called the monoclonal antibody. And then, as mentioned, continue to mask, distance and practice safe gatherings. Thank you. All right, I'm going to pass to Dell. Oh, sorry, Dr. Jim.
Thank you, Dr. Burge, for those comments. Adios, senor, President Niz, also Vice President, also First Lady as well. Thank you for your comments. And I just want to go ahead and just share our presentation and some of it will be redundant. I am Dr. Jill Jim. I am the Executive Director for Navajo Department of Health. So thank you for those that are listening. And these are often reminders and the reminders that you're receiving today, I think the way I think about the town hall is you're getting it from different perspectives. And you're receiving information about the importance of the addressing the pandemic from leadership. So our President of the Navajo Nation, our Vice President of the Navajo Nation and First Lady. And as we continue to provide information every week, and this is all information that we've been doing the entire pandemic. And a lot of it will be repetitive, but I think that's a good reminder. And I think in our Navajo language and teachings and sometimes they say maybe some of us weren't taught that way. But in some cases, like if you hear something once, maybe you understand it. But I always feel like repetition is more important to convey to us every single day. And the legal, like it's also in the in the in Western perspective, they say reinforcement, you need to do reinforcement. And that's what we do every day. I think every week when we provide information is reminding everyone out there about the three Ws. Wear your mask, wash your hand, wash your watch your distance as well. When you are among other individuals that you might know, might not know their vaccine status, or if they are maybe have been exposed to COVID or nineteen or not. So sometimes it's a little bit challenging and unknown. So just wanted to reiterate that. And this fact sheet is on the Navajo Department of Health Facebook webpage. So a lot of stuff that was mentioned today around the Omicron variant, Omicron variant and Dell with Epi will repeat the same information that be one one five two nine. And as Dr. Burge indicated, we're still learning more about the variant and the most important factor, I think, is that we need to every have everyone that's five years and older get vaccinated and eighteen years and older to get their booster shot. And now there's the new recommendations. And the only way that we can probably address vaccine hesitancy is to ask questions and be informed. And I think when we talk about information, be informed about the vaccine. And if you're curious and you might not know enough information, go to your local health facility and ask questions. And I think they'll be more more than willing to help you discuss the safetiness of the vaccine as well. So find solutions, find ways. There's a lot of information that can make you think different ways because of where your sources coming from. And I just want to reiterate misinformation could be a big barrier these days with just so many things happening on the the world worldwide web as well. So and as we mentioned, maintaining all of these practices that we talked about covering your mouth when you're sick, avoiding close contact with anyone that's sick and cleaning your hands. And I know people that have gotten exposed and they got exposed accidentally. And I think that's the that's the unfortunate manner of things when we do have individuals that have flu like symptoms and they're just saying it's related to flu, but and it's not. So and and so they eventually test positive and then put others at risk. I think that's why there's multiple layers of barrier or ways to protect yourself from COVID. And one of those that we mentioned is masking up if you're not sure and cleaning your hand before you eat or, as we have talked about, a lot of things that you touch. But I think we know now that people get exposed through coughing or and not low or poor ventilated rooms as well. And and so those are things just to consider when you are out and about probably Christmas shopping, going to the flea market, visiting family over the weekend, preparing for the holidays. Those are things that we enjoy and we want to continue enjoying them. And that's why it's important when you do gather. This is an example that we used last year and it's unfortunate that we feel like I feel like we have been in this pandemic for a long time and the same information is still relevant today and to some extent. And the guidelines have slightly changed and they'll change in the future. But for now, the example that I have is Jane goes to a holiday party. And on and day zero, she on day three learns she's exposed and self isolates at home. Day four, she gets tested for COVID. Day six, she tests as negative. And so on, because she tests as negative and there's an incubation period of fourteen days, you can get the virus anytime during that period. So that's why we ask people to either quarantine quarantine if they're exposed or if they're in isolation, if they if they were, if they they haven't test positive. I'm sorry, quarantine. And so on day eight, person Jane decides that she tests negative and then she goes and decides to visit people, does some holiday shopping. And she doesn't know that she does have COVID nineteen and is and is contagious even without symptoms. So she's asymptomatic. And she has now exposed ten people. So on day ten, Jane developed symptoms and she tests again and tests for COVID, tests as positive for COVID. So as you see in this timeline, it's very important that even though you test negative and you were exposed to someone and you're quarantining, that you continue to wear your mask and take precautions. And you're not out and about thinking that you're testing negative till you're clear. So there are different guidelines. We do have similar guidelines across, but we also know that younger people that are not vaccinated right now, we have a population of age twenty to forty four that are have lower vaccine rates on the Navajo Nation. And a lot of those are going to be asymptomatic. They're not going to show a lot of symptoms. So and when they're gathering or they're hauling wood, preparing for winter, we've had exposures from wind, from Hollywood, as from multiple households before. Of course, we still get a lot of other revival and other sort of traditional ceremonies and mainly a lot of home gathering is what we're finding out. So if people are saying, I don't have symptoms, but they were exposed and they don't know, they will continue to transmit the virus without knowing. So it's very important that either where you're vaccinated or unvaccinated, make sure that you take all the precautions that you can. They're also recommending testing, but we don't have a lot of testing before people gather. Some people and families I've heard on the Navajo Nation, they ask people that are vaccinated to come to the family events are gathering limits right now or fifteen persons or fewer. And we hope that people do follow those protocols and not gather in large settings. And another place that's important that we want to continue to address is the places of business and same situation, if you're sick and you have the flu, don't come to work, please stay home until you find out if you have COVID or not and get tested. Make sure you wear your masks, social distance, wash your hands. Avoid having visitors at the workplace, clean and disinfect. And I think these are just common practices that we have, but it's always a good reminder that your place of work is very important. And most exposures that we hear from the Navajo Nation programs are mainly in home transmission. So that means people are gathering and it's very important that they take all the precautions and not let down. Also with COVID, be prepared because if someone does begin to be sick in the household, make sure there's steps that are taken. We don't offer any self hotel isolations for most of the areas on the Navajo Nation, they're they're available in New Mexico. So there's a limited amount of availability for hotel isolation that we had about one year ago. So it means you would have to isolate our quarantine at home. And that means you have to be prepared for it, have some food available for fourteen days, decide on how and who's going to do your errands, take care of your pets and animals. And also, if you have children, who's going to take care of the children? And if you end up going to the hospital, have a bag available. But just wanted to make sure that, to reiterate the the preparation part, be prepared in case someone when someone does get sick. And then if there are any possible exposures at schools, all schools and businesses, including tour companies, fast food places, are to report to the Navajo Department of Health to the report exposure portal. And that's where we notify the businesses and schools and travel programs to ensure they take the proper precaution and making sure they get individuals tested and recommend quarantine and isolation. So that's important. So continue to do that. And individual individuals from the general public can report to the portal. So make sure that people do that, that as a Navajo citizen, you can do that. And also, just want to reiterate that the safest place is at home. So and we're not telling everyone to stay home all the time. You have to do your errands. But when you when you want to reduce your risk of exposure, the best place is at home and the safest place is at home. So I just wanted to let everyone know, we will be having a KTM forum next week on Thursday. And listen in to that as well for the COVID nineteen response. And I'll be at Thursday, six PM next week as well to hear more about what twenty twenty one we experience and how do we move forward? And I just wanted to thank the listeners this morning and I'm going to hand it over to Dell. He's the epidemiologist and he is going to go over the gating criteria. So take it away, Dell.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Jim. And everyone. My colleagues and everyone on the town hall. And our COVID epidemic epidemiology team will provide a date on our latest GIDI measures, the updated numbers. And it covers a two week time period from November nineteenth through December second. Is the numbers that I'm going to show is within that time period. This is our latest recent cases and trends. It's a sixty day time window that we're looking at here. You see, there's a lot of these bars, the gray bars. There's a lot of fluctuations from day to day. But this red line, these are nine day weighted center moving average, which basically just combine some of these data points so that we can see the trend a little much easier. So so with the latest time period here as of December second, we ended at about ninety to hundred cases really a day over a seven day period. So that's really still a high number of case counts that we're seeing currently. So ninety to hundred cases a day on average is a is a lot of pieces for us on Navajo Nation. And our seven day infection rate is at point nine eight. Our threshold for this is that one. So we're just barely below one. So we'll just continue to monitor that. And then this is our our map, looking at the COVID burden on Navajo Nation, our bordering states spatially. So there were six hundred and sixty six new cases on Navajo Nation over seven days from November twenty sixth through December second, which puts our seven day case rate at four hundred and twenty cases per hundred thousand people. So that's actually in the red, the red level of our GIDI matrix. And then over here on the map, I like to remind folks that on Navajo Nation, this is this is all red. And there was a request made from our leadership that it's hard to tell which which areas are doing better than others or worse than others, depending on how you look at it. And we decided to overlay that all the red color here to different colors to see who's doing better than others as far as service area on Navajo Nation. So just reminder that it's we're apparently in all red. But to delineate who's doing better than others. So here it is. You see a lot of orange here, Tuba, Kianta, Chinley, Shiprock, Gallup and Crown Point service areas are all in this orange color, meaning their seven day case rate is within this range, two hundred to three hundred and ninety nine cases per hundred thousand people. And then Winslow and Fortifying service areas are within this lesser range of zero. Range of zero to one hundred and ninety-nine cases per hundred thousand people. So those are. Situation on, on Navajo and our bordering states. We continue to see a high number of cases as well, especially in New Mexico. In Mexico, I saw this morning, there yesterday cases was like around. Fourteen hundred cases yesterday. So that's a real high number of cases for, for the state of New Mexico. Additional metrics, we have our test seven-day test positivity rate is at sixteen percent. Stayed about the same as last time. And then about thousand average daily tests in a seven-day period were conducted. So a lot of testing is going on. Across Navajo Nation at all the healthcare facilities. And then hospital capacity, average daily occupancy here for house, regular hospital beds is at sixty-two percent. And then ICU beds, intensive care unit beds is at a hundred and that's a bit concerning for us. That this is now at a hundred and we'll. We're continuing to monitor, monitor this very closely as we move. Throughout this week. And into next week. So contact tracers to daily case ratio is at two. Our threshold for this is at five. And so we're below five and it's. We'd like to get on, I think folks are trying to hire additional contact tracers across Navajo Nation. This is an updated vaccination chart for Navajo Nation residents only. There are now a hundred and ten thousand, one hundred and eight Navajo Nation residents are fully vaccinated. So the total population is now at fifty-nine percent fully vaccinated. Eligible residents ages twelve years and older is now at seventy-one percent are fully vaccinated. These are just epic curves for the entire pandemic, all the way from March twenty twenty to, to December, whereas December second. Twenty twenty-one. So. Just the recent trend here, both in the U S, which is the blue line. And the Navajo Nation and the orange line, we did see a little bit of a, an increase in cases. Within this reporting period. So both in the U S on and on Navajo Nation. Seven-day incidence bar chart is reflected here, comparing Navajo Nation here in the yellow bar. To the fifty states. And a couple of other jurisdictions. Here we're at number four compared to the fifty states, along with New Mexico, we're in the top ten. Comparing, compared to other states. Seven-day case rate here across the U S, especially within our region, as I mentioned, in Mexico is seeing a lot of COVID cases currently. As well as I saw on the, here on, on the Navajo Nation. Community transmission remains really high across the U S, all the red color here meaning high COVID transmission. Including within our region here, all the counties within Navajo Nation are, are red. For high community COVID transmission. This is the variant profile for Navajo Nation. We call it the N N S three. Comparing report thirty to thirty-one, there were really no changes and this table remains the same from last week. We're working. She has a, right now we're trying to update this. For the week. Hopefully tomorrow we'll have an updated. Chart here. So this is as of November thirtieth. Is the, the report thirty-one came out. So seven hundred and eighty-eight. Cases have been identified with the Delta variant, eighty-one are with the Delta Epsilon. And these others are the variants labeled as variants being monitored across Navajo Nation. So it's just a total of a thousand, one thousand seventy-three cases. Have been identified with a variant of concern. Or variant being monitored. This is the CDC variant profile as of November, or I'm sorry, December fourth, which is last Saturday. And the orange bar is really the Delta variant, continues to be the dominant variant across the U S. This is the high-risk chapter slide, sixty-one chapters made the new. List from November nineteenth through December second. These are, last week was sixty-five, this time around is sixty-one. So. These are, you know, chapters that make the list based on an incidence rate. Of having a hundred cases per hundred or more. Per hundred thousand people over for two consecutive weeks is how, how the definition to making this list. And the red column here, the red. Area, these are the twenty-three chapters that have been on this list. For at least six weeks since October twenty-second. So these are the chapters that. Where we see, you know, cases, increasing cases every day. For, for, and they've been on this list, as I said, for at least six weeks. So in these chapters, you know, a lot of them are. The bigger chapters by, by population and also like where they're geographically located. On Navajo Nations, they're located like the major throughways. To get from one part of the rez to the other. And then some of them are located near border town. And I mentioned, usually mention Upper Fruitland. Upper Fruitland's been on here for, for more than six weeks. Is there, you know. Potentially is because they're, they're located next to Farmington. The bigger, you know, the influence of a bigger or being near Farmington city with a lot of people. Around. So. So this is our. Irish chapter slide. Then this is their recommendation risk level assessment. Our case level remains high. We remain in red, as I mentioned earlier. The Delta variant, we're still seeing is the dominant variant even on Navajo Nation. And test positivity remains high sixteen percent. And then our public health capacity for contact tracers is remains insufficient. As I said, our threshold is at five. So we're below five. And then this hospital capacity for, for bed occupancy is especially for the ICU bed. Is a bit concerning and we'll continue to monitor this, as I said, moving forward. And last, where are we? Right now, as, as our COVID response to the Navajo Nation. Is according to our GIDI matrix, looking at all these indicators that I just went over. Cases, the testing, the public health capacity, hospital capacity, all the numbers are in the red. So, well, so that's where we are in the red. Level of our GIDI matrix for COVID response on the Navajo Nation. So I'm going to. In here and hand it over to Shama. Dr. Fowler to close, close out the town hall on, on, on our behalf. So thank you. Take it away, Shama.
I can hear Shiyash. Ba'ehhni tzen do, kodo'n hi dene' e b'ka'anan l'wo'i i'cheha'e. Kodo' she'ei ilsa' etfahas ne'oleh, she'ke'ero'sh dene' e. Kodo'e ze'n i'che'ze'il, in'e' ine, Dr. Burge i'cheha'e. Ko'eshonad' no', ani o'kodi nahl nehii, e'n hit'ant da'hananat ni't. O'kodi ini, ba'ch'nahot, ani e'omakran, or ye, e'e do'a nit, e'at, ende' inhil'pahos zen'ahlanihi do, y'dellni nigi. Jo'obat'ohot, ani t'enle, th'hananande, h'nananani, konde'hos, do'je' b'hl'ahot so'je'e. Ya'va pai'k'awri de'llne, a'je'e k'atla'ya'ill ni, konde' enit e'heit e'ido. Heit'op edolna'ige, at'on hil'pet ahos ni'ta, e'jo' at'in nanal'k'ahn hi'llne, konde' din hi dene' b'hl'ahot so'je. A'je'e ah'ol'an hil'ya'ill ni'ta. O'kodi omakran, bete' nini gi e, jo'ei she'ild'oh slah'oh, at'oh na'be'ye'tn deh, jo'ei lo' chosh'toi'ini, te'apkon deh. At'ha'ni l'k'ahi gi e, do'ya' p'ehos zen'da, dre' at'in al'k'hatan hi'llne, kon. Y'te'na'ba'hi e'ko'no', o'e' ze'n leni gi, nacha'ata'atsih, ado dit, am nacha'ata'atsai tchan, at'ono' nacha'ata'atsaihi. Jo'ei st'han de z'de' danti, materna, fai'zir de'llnani, dan'a' a'chan, e'at. E'na'b'hanetza di' booster sha' de'llnani, ado st'han ta'ta' do'te' g'beda, he'igi jo'ei rok, ab' booster nigi nacha. A'al'ya dan hi'llne. O'ko'ash'ho'neh, she'ke'ero'sh dene' e di, ko'e' ze'n leni nacha'atal, na'ado di, na'al'k'ahi e. At'i la' b'hl'ta, b'hl'ta, b'hl'ta'at'ero, cha'ita' da'ek'osan do'na'jo'e, ze'l'i'je. E'mant'ek'oma ena'ba'is de'llne, e'at' do' ze'ana' do'ni'la' p'ehot e'n hi'llne. Ado di, k'ani chi'ar'ya'ho'ne' e'da'ya'zi, e'di na'al'k'ahi, n'ch'tsosan th'hanas, e't'alt'a. Adon le, n'ch'tsos'hi, z'ahl'hananas, z'libi et'na'ki'ol'k'ahlun, et'na'kit'amo. Na'tle'je'e nd'al'k'ahi, ado di, est'han gitche, jo'e' ni't'ant da'na' des, k'innhi'llne di, tsos'ch'ch'je. O'ko'k'adi bi'nan e, k'ahi e'di ch'ichi onne', bi, at'i bi'il'ka', konde' di yo'tro'je. A'je' chahot so'je, ye'egot, de'nanetza, al'at'ch'nde, al'ad'nez, al'ad'demiliaj' do'ba'ant'i d'nezan din. Kon'e' la' b'na'dat'ohr'na, jo'ashi ini do'olt'chatlan, b'ch'uti be'ehos zenit, she'ke'ero'sh dene' e. Ado di na'al'k'ahi, at'in da'al'ka', ado ze'n em'bl'has, an'atsesk'ep'bl'has, ago, e'ron hit'ant ya'nanetza. O'kodi nd'al'k'ahi, al'ap'ed'nahoti, eshtlatan da'al'k'han e'ka' at'in a'k'yon e'ilk'et. Ado di ze'n leni nacha'atal'ya'idi, d'ne'b'hl'ahotsa, ka'ke'ui t'eni'ji te'ya. O'ko' a'je' ze'ba'atal'ya'ige, al'ad'nezan din'oh an'ezna, demiliaj' do'ba'ala'nezan din'oh at'epi, kon'e' la'e. At' nacha'ata'atsi i'cheha'e, o'ko' al'ap'es o'be'olt'cha'je, at'eh est'han ya'ri bi'il, bi'il'ke' din hi dene' b'hl'ahot so'je. A'jo' di, na'kitz'at da'beda, he'ist'han ya'ri do'ba'ah, on'e' la'e al'ap'es o'be'olt'cha', kon'e' la'e. Ba'atal'ya, o'kodi nan e, k'idi'ge, hit'ant de'gonanar. Eshtlatin chahot so'je, a'je'e di k'at, a'ti'ko'ne' nachana'as, o'ko'n le' de'de'gonades, k'idi'shi b'ini na'atsa. O'kodi tsos'ch'ch'je be'olt'cha'igi, adon le' nes, a'hanas, e'n el'kile' di, yo'tro'je, di eshtlatin b'hl'ahot so'je. N'le'hos, do'do' de'ben sa'do, she'bi'tro'je, a'je'e hit'ant ya'at, ya'at des, ke'eba'ehhni tzen, kon'e'. Ze'n leni nacha'atal'ya'ei. O'kodi la'lt'awerin, de'llnani, chosh'toi'ini, l'ha'ont'ol, n'ch'li'jo' e'di COVID nineteen, hot'ab'ye't ba'al'ya. A'je' l'ha'ont'ol, n'le' e'di ka'al'ad'nezan din. Al'ad'nezan din demiliaj' an'tsos'te' din'oh at'ha', kon'e' la'e, o'kodi omakran, beti, n'ne' as'hi. Do'k'odon hi d'ya'hi'ni, da'do' do'she'hi'ha' do'chneta. Ado di tchan nasne' bl'has, ago, di est'han din'oh, jo'ei tchan nasne'le' bl'has, ago, al'ad'nezan din'oh an'ezna, bl'has, ago. O'kodi, est'han din'oh, al'ay, e'ego, high-risk, e'ad, e'ego, nan'ahlni, e'ero'sh dene', o'kodi delta'weri. De'llnani, e' nahl nehii, ben'ach'na'ld'oygi, ben'ach' e'at'i ch'ichi onne'. S'el'ke'et, e'she'it e' kodo' nacha'ba'hanan, o'lole, ar'ak'odon hi na't'ani, inhi'llne, e'di. Nd'al'k'ahi do, k'ash'ine' la'e b'na'dat'ol, na'tis' din, demiliaj' do'ana', k'nezan din'oh at'slat, din'oh at'i. Kon'e' la'e b'na'dat'ol, na'apkon deh, k'ash'ine' la'e k'at, ze'l'ionne' na'na. L'ch'ehes k'ed'ol, at'i l'ch'azel' i, na'has'tcha, l'ha'e'ya'li, yel'os k'ed'ol, ya't'entasli, o'ke'he'. Di ko'et'hanji'tar'acha, n'ne' da'oh'no', u'e' ze'n nacha'atal'ya, da'oh'no', u'e'ya. Be'at'ach'ol'nyan deh, o'ke'eba'ehhni tzen, jo'n hi'llne, o'kodi ze'n nacha'atal'ya' do, s'ad'ol hi'llni, na'ah. Oh, yust'huysani, no'leni, ze'n nacha'atal'ya' i'cheha'e. Ado ts'el'ke'je ke'ngol'leni, n'hi'ed'oh jo'ba', n'tsop'kes, oh jo'ye'egob'eh'cha'ingol'leni, n'hi'ed'oh'leni. O'ko'ya'nanet'eh, she'ke'ero'sh dene' e, she'edi, kodo' ma'ide' sh'g'ishni, n'sh'wan'thor'ech'ni, ni'bas'esh'chi'n tcha'ba'ha' e'ta'sh'ch'elo, t'ash'ch'eta'sh'nal'eh. T'hos'as'ah'ol ye'ne', a're' e'sh'ch'esh'ike, o'ko'ko'e i'cheha'e, k'j'hanada'so' k'ezid'oh. N'hi'ema'sani, n'hi'ch'ei, n'hi'nal'eh, adon hi man hi'je'et, ak'j'ap'ach'ata' ap'kesi i'cheha'e. Chala'de, k'odochan, n'leni hi'ch'eh'wi'le, de'kosnas e't'alt'a, beti, no'hot'ab'ye'elia, do'she'hot'ab'ye'tan, te'nteh. Jo'k'edo'e be'ehos zenit, edo' ze'n, n'n leni, ze'n ek'han, leni e'ego, de'is'ni'ts'ah. O'kodi l'ha'ont'ol, ni'hi'li, n'ni' delta'weri, jo'e'hot'ah, na'na'ki'one'. Ado di ini, ben'ahon, ne'di, k'odo' th'hananande, South Africa, dah'ahlneh, a'ne' e l'hananas, n'hi'jo'de' omakran, de'llne. E'at'in al'k'hat'oh, jo'ab'ik'esidi, ti, dan hi'llne, ze'il, in'e. O'kodi ze'n leni, ben'ap' en'li'ya'igi, ash'ho'nde, di fai'zir do' materna. Na'k'yon et' nacha'atal'ya', e'di k'at's'han de z'de' d'at'na'ali'ago, e'k'ab' booster, n'leni gi. A'jen, na', l'ha'na'ado, k'hat'zan hi'llne, ze'ado j'ee'ch'ei, jo'do' a'hananet'eh. O'kodi omakran hi'llnani, e'di booster, n'ni' e'la'to' y'te'na'ba', e'ben'na', k'odo' ze'il, in'n. Jo'ba'at'aneh, she'ke'ero'sh dene' e, di omakran, or ye'ni, o't'et'ana'ko' e'ts'kin'lo' nahl nehii, it'eh. Do'ts'kin'lo' et'et'ol, nahii, it'eh, e'k'odon nacha'ba'ap'hanosin. O'ko' n'hi'ed, n'hi'ed dene' e dan'lihi, jo'al'at'ah, e' n'hi'na'nt'kin'sela. Di k'odosh'ch'ei ya'ya'ti'ita, a'ho'wa'do' na'nt'kin'i, o'ha'yu'i. N'hi'ema'sani, n'hi'nal'eh, n'hi'ma'ya'je, da'and'lo', o'yu'go'ye'nda'nt'kin. O'ko'ho'wa'do' na'nt'kin'i, jo'e' a'k'ui'ch'eh, et'ach'ats'zi'ido, et'ach'ach'el'nyan. Ka'ish'e a'ch'de'chna', et'ach'eyan, jo'e' di ch'enyan, ch'jo' s'ni'ido. En'ago, et'ach'ats'zi'ido, ho'wa'ach'oh, e'isht'ach'ol'sen. Ado' nahon, na'at'ani, ki, jo'e' be'et'ach'os'nsen, do'be'et'ach'ach'el'nyan. Ch'ago she'ix'de'ya'ago, ech'se, ch'ot'ch'eh, et'ach'os'ol'ze. Da'ash'ix'tch'ol'la, do'sh'ke'es'ki, sh'ch'ito' sh'ze'ix'ap'et'at'ees'pa'le, jo'e' di a'hi'llne, di k'at'oh sh'. Sh'ch'ito' sh'ze'et'at'nu'pa'le, e'di ho'wa'do'ko'hash'ne. O'kodi hot'ah, ben'na'dat'ni'tchin, o'tan, ech'et'ah di'ch'achi, ko'e' be'ech'tan'hot'osen, do'le. Ado a'as'ho'ko'eh'at'at'nu'pa'le, jono', ben'ast'hi'ah'wi'la, ha'ak'at'ab'ena'at'and'le, ch'as'lah'ota. Ado'sh'de'ya'ago, be'et'ach'os'nsen. Ado cha'ed'et'ah, he'ed'et'ah, b'ch'ch'as'do' ts'eh, b'ini a'et'at'ees'pa'le. A'hot'ah, chala' ben'ye'ei, inhi'di, n'ne' e, he'eshi y'ti'oh, be'je'et'at'el'tas'oh, cha'et'at'el'tas'oh. Do'ts'eh it'eh, da'ato' e' ben'nan, hi'ch'ito' n'ze'ap'et'at'ees'pa'le, on'ach'an hi'di'ne. Ado di e't'asp'osebo't, ech'ned'eh, nahon ach'el'ke'it. O'kon deh, le'ts'il'zei, b'hl'has'ago, ash'ho'nde, h'jo'la' nahon hot'ash'le. Hot'ah, edo' ben'at'ad'ah, isht'han, k'ash'ino' sh'ta, le'ko' hat'ank'isidi, edo' h'jo'be'be'ch'ip'et'at'ees'pa'le. Do'ho'jo', n'hi'et, b'ch'ni'hi'ch'ito' n'ze'et'at'ees'pa'le, be'hanosin'oh, e'ah'ho'wa'desota, jo'to' be'hanosinta. Za'e'hot'ah, dan'ta, ch'et'iro, do'el' i, da'isht'han, do'ho'jo' ch'ol' e'ko' e'ho'wa'desota, ch'ok'ash'ina'ha'ya't'eh. E'na'ado, nak'oto' ch'ho'jo' ts'il'ze'bi'ta'hani. K'ash'ino' l'ha'e'di t'rah'ol'ye'ni, ki, n'hi'ch'ito' n'ze'et'at'ees'pa'le. E'do' a'kon tatz'ik'is'ol, en'ado, al'ay be'na'ham'le. Ch'kin'dat'ap'ano', a'be'hanosin'eh, isht'han, edo' nacha'ba'hanosin'ole, jo'e' a'hi'llne, be'et'ach'eyan. Ado nacha'al'ch'ino' do'ash'ho'nde, e'a'jo' e'ego, bahas'ch'eh. Chala' di, slato' omakran, hi'llnani, il'ch'ino' do' y'te'net'ni'la.